Okay, good evening everybody. Hello, can you hear me? Good evening.
Good evening ma'am.
Right, okay, so then last week that many of them told that they did not, there were some of their students that who could not take part in the introduction part of action research. So I thought of this briefing and talking about what is expected from you at the proposal presentation as well as how you how you can score marks. So I'm going to explain all these things. So before that I will briefly explain about action research, right? So even the name implies from the name itself that you can get an idea about what is an action research. So you have heard about other research like surveys, scientific researchers, right? So then there are so many types of researchers, but here that we are talking here about action research. It is very popular among the teachers because all the other research that we find in, we collect data from different sources and finally analyze and come to conclusions and then do give recommendations. But they are of they are of no use because nobody read them, nobody reads. So therefore they are just, we have identified, we have gathered data, analyzed, identified the problems and we have come to conclusions and we have recommended, but nothing happens. But here in action research, the teachers do something, right? So if you want to check whether your method, teaching method is successful or not, you can do an action research. If you want to, if you have a problem and if you want to solve it, you can do using an action research, right? Now imagine your students, they are reluctant to engage in group work. So you do an action research and you eradicate the problem. So you finally, your students will be able to work cooperatively. So therefore, this is a very practical research and no need of expertise in research. Anybody can do because it is very popular in different fields like medicine, nursing, psychology, sociology, especially in education. I don't know whether it is an E B for you all, efficiency bar. Because I, yes, I know that you need to do an action research. Right? Well, this is very popular among the teachers and others in the education field because it's very, very effective when compared with all the other researchers because you reflect on what you do, right? So there is continuous reflection on what you do and improvement. So in colleges of education, if the teachers, if they are our students of colleges of education, you know that you are maintaining reflective journals during your teaching practice sessions, right? So even during the two academic years you are spending in the college, when you are doing teaching practice, you are maintaining a reflective journal. And when you are doing your third year internship, also you are maintaining your reflective journal, right? So there are, in the reflective journal, what we do is we reflect on the lesson. Actually, if you are doing a lesson, now there are certain stages, warmer setting in the scene and there are some steps, presentation, practice, production. So there are some other steps like assessments and evaluation. So in each step, you reflect on whether you were successful or whether you could do as you planned, as you expected or and what you have learned from the lesson. That means whether your methodology was successful or not, whether you have to change it when you are doing the next lesson. So it gives, when you reflect on it, it gives you some ideas to improve yourself for the next one. So like that, in action research, you need to maintain a reflective journal. Now give me the answer for this one. Through an action research, who will improve? Who will improve through an action research? How did you know in action research? Yes? Tell me. Who will improve?
Teacher.
Teacher, yes, why? Why teacher improves? I teach improve any comment.
First they make an intervention plan for that and then they get the feedback regarding it. Then if it doesn't work as they expected, they may remake it.
Yes, so then. Yeah. Bobby. And now as an example, the teacher tries out or is the teacher, teacher teaches a lesson, right? And during the lesson, teacher identifies her weaknesses or weaknesses in the methodology. Or weaknesses in the activities. So then when the teacher reflects on the lesson or the methodology or whatever the activity she uses, then when she plays a lesson, she can improve that. Now as an example, she has visual aids, right? Man, they can hear. Yes, I. I do not use educational campus. Hello. Can you please unmute for a moment? Use the vocational campus that was in charge of this. Can you please unmute? Okay, right. Okay, I will, I will tell again. Is Channa, Channa is there? Available? Channa, are you available?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, okay. So if you have any problem, you can, because since I explained you previously, if you have anything that you get it clarified today, right? So okay, I will, I will explain from the beginning because you had some.
Sure ma'am, thank you.
You had some disturbances, okay, right? Okay, right now, I was telling that action research, they are very popular in education because we use some actions to solve certain problems or to test certain methodologies or teaching techniques that we use for the students, right? So now as an example, I told you last week also, I was using Google Classroom. So through Google Classroom, I wanted to test because Google Classroom enables me to, not only me, the members to comment. We can, now being admins, I can upload videos, then PowerPoint presentations, whatever I want, I can even materials, I can upload, even I can do some tests using Google Classroom. So others can comment. So I use this arena, this space to encourage my students to write. So they are, I asked the peers to identify the mistakes they do. Then finally, I just identified the mistakes. So like that, I did error corrections for my students. Finally, I gave them another, I, I gave them a pre-test. At the very beginning, I identified their problems. Then I had so many activities through Google Classroom and then finally, I gave them a post-test. So I presented it at the SLAEL Tech Conference at Mass Athena that conducted by the British Council in two thousand thousand twenty. Even if you go to internet, SLAEL Tech Conference, then you can see my research on Google Classroom there. So after doing this research, you just find some, there are so ample opportunities for you all, right? If you do a genuine work, you can do your presentations anywhere, do something, investigate something new. There are ample opportunities. Right? So then I was talking about the action research. So especially it is very popular among, among educationists, teachers. So they can do action research to improve themselves, first and foremost to improve themselves as well as to overcome the problems they encounter in the classroom and to improve your student, students as well. So I was talking about maintaining a reflective journal, right? So in the reflective journal, our students, they are keeping a reflective journal. So our students now, especially now if there are colleges of education students, you may know how do you maintain a reflective journal? So during the teaching practice spells, during their two-year academic, two academic years that they are spending in the college, they have four block teaching spells. They are maintaining a reflective journal for each lesson, they are writing a reflection. They write about their reflection, reflection is how did they, that means whether it was successful as they expected and so what they have learnt for the future. So they have, they put them into three columns and they write about the lesson. So as an example, imagine that they use some visual aids or activity cards. So then the teacher feels that students, it was not interesting and the teacher could not get the active participation of the students. The teacher learns that, tells that I expected the active participation of the students during the lesson, during the practice stage, but I could not get as I expected. So then you reflect, then you reflect the reason. Because the activities, the, the groups are too large and the activities in the activity sheets were too simple or it was not sufficient for the whole group. So then you come to a suggestion, it's better if I could put them into small groups. It's better if I had more activity sheets, right? Then or else that you can come out with some other suggestions like it's better I used so much of time for the practice stage. I could have given more activities for the practice stage. So like that you can reflect on your lesson. So when you write the next lesson, you can overcome the problems you encountered in the previous lesson, right? So like that, you improve yourself by writing the reflective note or maintaining a reflective journal. So in the same manner, when you are doing an action research, you have to maintain a reflective journal. Reflective journal means you have to write about every activity you do and you write a reflection on it. That means now you can write what's that, what, what was the activity you did? How many students participated? So then how, you know, as an example, if I talk about grouping. So first, imagine you are, you gave an activity and you put them into five groups and let them engage in the activity. But you identified six students out of fifteen did not, they were not interested in the group activity. Then next day, you plan some other activities like enjoyable games, competitions. Then you observe whether these six engage in the activities properly. So like that, you reflect on what you did and then you improve yourself and plan the next one. So that is the important thing in action research. So this is, we use action research to test the effectiveness of teaching methods, teaching techniques, a new teaching, what, now here we don't talk a lot about theories. Right? So we, we can test our effectiveness of teaching activities, teaching methods, teaching techniques. Or if you have a problem, right, then you can do intervention to overcome it. So when you are, we'll go to the next one before telling the next thing. Okay, right. Now here, action research is focused on solving a problem or informing individual and community-based knowledge in a way that impacts teaching, learning and other related processes. It is less focused on contributing theoretical input. So we don't pay much attention on theory. We pay much attention on a problem and we think of how to solve the problem, right? So then we produce actionable input. So then, so we do it in, in schools, in the classroom and yes, especially in the classrooms, you can do this to improve your students, right? So then you can test your educational techniques, right? You can improve the burning problem that you encounter, right? So it is a cyclic process. Cyclical process means, now I will show you the models later on, right? So then here that we mostly do this action research to, in the, in the classroom setting to improve yourself or to overcome a problem. Right here, in the action research model, the Kurt Levin's model, there are four steps. They are planning, acting or implementation, observing, reflecting, right? Imagine you have a problem, so you plan some activities to overcome the problem. Then you implement the, the activities, then you observe, observe means you reflect on that whether the, the methodology or intervention was successful or whether you need to improve. So after reflecting, you plan again. I will, I implement. So that it may go on, it's a cyclic process. Maybe that it may have two, three cycles. So sometimes you may be able to finish it within one cycle. Mostly that it takes about two, three cycles, right? Right? Then, so these are the definitions, you can just read. I think I have all, did I send you the action research PowerPoint presentation? Did I send you? Did you receive this? Did you all receive? I just want to know whether you received this or no? Now we'll go to Kurt, Abada.
No ma'am.
Okay, I will send it today. I already sent, I think they have forgotten. Right? So Kurt Levin, this is the most prevalent model we use. According to Kurt Levin, it is a research method in which the researcher intervenes. The researcher intervenes, they can research of make it a may involve you know. All the others that researcher doesn't involve. What the researcher does is only collecting information from different means. By interviewing, giving a questionnaire, by studying documents. So they, they are external people, but here the researcher is a part. But he is, he intervenes in this, during the research. So there are two purposes of Kurt Levin's model. According to Kurt Levin, it will bring about positive changes. So then by doing an action research according to Kurt Levin, it brings positive changes. Positive changes, I think, and secondly, knowledge and theory will be generated. So after doing the research, we can generate a theory. Right? Right? So then, action research enables researchers to self-reflect their practice. They self-reflect. After doing it, they reflect about themselves, about the practice they did, right? And whether they have got positive changes, right? Then according to Mills, any systematic inquiry conducted by teacher researcher to gather information about the ways their particular school operate, how they teach and how well their students learn. So you can take one problem or you can take a teaching methodology to test it through action. And research, right? So it's a cyclic process, cyclic and iterative means doing again and again, happens again and again, right? This process happens again and again. So there are stages, planning, acting, developing and reflecting. So these are the four reflections, planning, implementing. Developing and reflecting, planning, implementing, observing and reflecting, right? Kurt Levin, planning, implementing, observing and reflecting. So this is something else. Action research aims to identify problems and then produce an iterative plan. That means that happens again and again of action with strategies to strive for best practice. So we have so many strategies and with best practices to solve the problem. So there are base, four basic stages in the cyclical action research process. Reflect, plan, act, observe, it means sub-color again, there are plan, implement, observe, reflection. First one is planning, then implementing, then observing, reflecting, right? So this, this goes on, right? So then, if it is not very much important, we can go. Okay, right now, what you have to do first is, now these are the differences between action research and other researchers. So according to that, the normal researchers, the fundamental researchers, we need the expert researchers for that. But for the action research, any person can do it, right? Anyone can, if, if he is willing, he can do. So then during the, other researchers, it, it is done to build theories. But here, day-to-day practice is based on action research. So for the other researchers, we need a long period of time. But action research, we can do within three months, four months, five months, right? For the other researchers, we take random sample, that means now we don't, we don't have an exact, we can just randomly select people. But here, purpose of sample means now if we identify about six students who are, who are reluctant to take part in grouping, group work, then we can take them as our sample. So it is purpose. Then here that in fundamental research, evaluation is done by experts. But here, evaluation, evaluation means whether the practice they do is successful or not. It is done by the practitioner. Then here in fundamental research, we have standardized tools. Recommend karpotham, standardized tools, right? So you can find it from the research papers or in the internet that you can find them. But here, in the action research, tools are made by the teacher. You don't need to have standardized tools, right? They are made by the teachers. Then in actual, other research, complex and rigid research design. So they have different research design, right, mixed method and all. But here, our research method is very simple and very flexible. Right? So then, for other research, they need a training, but here it is not necessary. So other, for other research, they have goals and they have some rigid expectations, but here it is not. Right? So then a method of identifying the problem to be studied. Now here informal research, that they review previous research done by other people. But in action research, that we test or we find solutions for a current problem, right? So then, so this is the, this is one of the models here. Planning, acting means implementing, observing and reflecting. I told you that Kurt Levin's model we use, this is one of the models. So it is you plan, then you implement, then you observe, then you reflect on your process, whether it is successful or not. If not, what can you do? You plan again, right? Look at here, now it is just like a cyclic process, right? Plan, act, can implement, observe, reflect. I plan, plan, act, observe, reflect. So this is, this goes on until your problem is solved, right? Even that there is another model, planning, acting, developing, reflecting, right? Right? Now, I, what I want to tell is, how can you identify a problem? Tell me. You can't just ask from one of the teachers, teacher, I want to do an action research. Can you please tell me a problem? You can't do like that. How can you identify a problem? Tell me, the way you can identify a problem. Now you need to do an action and research. You need to find a problem. How can you do that? Because it is essential in the proposal presentation as well as in your research, it is essential because there should be a way that you identified it. You can't just ask from other teachers and identify. You yourself during the process, identify the problem, okay? How can you identify a problem for your action research? Tell me. Okay, discussed about this in the previous week. How can you identify?
Observation.
Yeah, you can observe. Even now, imagine when you, you have given a group activity. So you observe during the period that you noticed about six students, they were reluctant. They did not like to engage in the activities in groups or yes, cooperatively. So observation is only one, what are the others? Yes, observation is only one way of collecting data for the problem. What are the others? Quickly then.
Interviewing.
Reflect, yes, in the reflective journal, if you are maintaining a reflective journal, you can identify the problems. There may maybe number of problems now, on the first day, that's, that's important. So on the first day that you have written, I gave them a group work. But six students out of twenty-five were reluctant to, you, you need to include the numbers. Were reluctant to engage in a group work. Next day, you have written during the reading lesson, I, it was identified around twelve students couldn't read the lesson properly. They mispronounced the words, they were stammering, stuttering and they did not identify vocabulary. So like that, you write, when you are writing the reflective journal, you write the problems. You write the problems you encounter daily. So finally, even that as one of the students said, even by interviewing, by giving a questionnaire also. We can find, uh problems, but most successful thing is observation. Because when you are doing the. Lesson, you will observe the problem. Then, when you go through your reflective journal, you can identify what is the most prevalent problem. What is the most burning problem for your, uh teaching? So if it is that students are unable to write letters properly, you prioritize them. You write all the problems you encounter and you prioritize them. The, you select the first one as your most important, uh problem, right? Your most important problem should be the first, it should come up. So, uh in that way, you prioritize your problems, the burning problem, and you select it as your problem to solve. So then, that is how you have to identify a problem. So after that, what you have to do? Now imagine you identified a problem. How did you identify the problem? By observing, either by analyzing documents from the progress reports. Or by marking the papers or marking their continuous assessments, right? So in any mean that you found the problem. Now, what are going to do? Then you list, list down the problems and prioritize them. I imagine you selected the problem. Now what are going to do? Imagine now the problem you encountered is, the students in grade six. They are unable to, they, they means that about, uh twelve students are unable to write letters properly. And they don't identify the letters B and D, right? So. Now, that is one problem. Then again you identify, uh they can't read. The words, they don't identify vocabulary, they don't know the meaning of vocabulary. So like that, you identify lots of problems. Now you write them in an order, then prioritize, right? Now imagine you identified the problem. Now what are you going to do? So you need to identify the background of the problem also. Rational, why it has happened. So if it is, uh related to, uh. Right, so because I get some, uh cases. That means now that we are, I have to attend some students. So now one of the students that, when she was in the college. She underwent lots of problems because, now this is, I am telling since I am teaching you guidance and counseling also. This girl was the only child in the family and her father was critically ill because he was suffering from a cancer. And mother is also unemployed. So since this is the only child, she had to do lot of work. And now you know that the rules and regulations in the college is very strict and they are not allowed to go home. So though she was suffering, yes, she was about to get depression, so she. Came to me and told me the problem. Then she wanted to take a decision whether to leave it and go with the father. Or, uh to be with the father or to stay here. So then I talked to her and I convinced her the importance of the job. Because her father's only expectation was her to become a teacher. So then she came to me, she talked to me and then I sued her and I told that. Whenever you need to go to your father, you go. And even. The, the day, the, the father was, she was updating me about his condition and they, they had spent a lot of money. Then after that, even before the death of the father, she came to me and said, Madam, now father is very critical, then I asked her to go home. But anyway, unfortunately, they had to go to the, go on the back strip. So then, when she was in Jaffna, that she got the message, the others got the message that father was dead. So then, anyway, that she had to spend the day there and next day. She was taken halfway by the relatives and even we also attended her, the father's funeral. So that's why I always ask you back, because that there are certain, sometimes you need to talk with the students just to make up their minds. To, uh, give courage to face the problems, right? Right, we'll come to this one. So, uh, so she wanted to, uh, she, her mother wanted to thank me. Because now she is going to give the one year almsgiving of the father. The, this Sunday. So mother has asked her to call me and thank her for everything I have done for her, right? Then, uh, what I want, what I was talking was that, now after finding the problem. What you have to do? Now imagine you have identified the problem, maybe through observation. So when you were, uh, marking their essays or when you're marking their continuous assessments. When you were marking their, uh, test paper. So I did, you, you imagine you identified, then you have to identify the background, why it was happened, rational. So why this was happen? And then you have to think of, imagine now their, uh, formation of letters is incorrect. So then sometimes maybe that they, when they were young, they did not have a proper teachers to teach them how to write letters. Right, so that is the, now you have to find the background. So after that. You had to plan an intervention to overcome this. Now as an example, uh have you watched that Thare Samipar film? Anybody? That we are, uh, Amir Khan was acting and there was a child who was suffering from autism. Anybody who watched that film, you should watch Being Teachers. Because that it was about. A child who was suffering from autism and all the teachers rejected him, insulted him. He was put, uh, out of the class because they did not identify the problem and the parents, they were forcing him to go to school. He did not like and he, uh, he sees sometimes the letters were dancing. He couldn't write letters properly, his, uh, the numbers are so big. So the teachers were punishing him, scolding him. So finally he met a very. Very good teacher. He was teaching, um, arts. So this teacher was very, uh, loving, uh, so this very, uh, so she showed kindness to this child. He loved this child and he identified his problem. So finally, he taught him how to write letters. He, first he taught on his skin. And there was, uh, as a sand board and he wrote letters, uh, on, on sand. Then he, he made the, uh, he asked him to write the numbers in big squares and gradually it was minimized. So like that, he used lots of methods to teach him the formation of letters and, uh, numbers, right? To, uh, to, uh, come to the correct size, correct formation. So like that, you can plan an intervention, right? Then you can implement, after that you can observe. Then reflect on the activities done. So during the reflection, you come to a conclusion that now you have done this intervention for twelve students, out of twelve students. Uh, about eight students, now they have improved. Then you plan again, uh, some activities in order to improve the rest of the students. So like that, sometimes your cycles may go, you may have three, four cycles until everyone comes to the proficiency level. So. Uh, now you identify the problem, you plan some activities to overcome the problem, you implement them, you observe, you reflect. Then that during the reflection, you identify there are some, still there are some students who have not improved. Then you plan again, then again implement, then observe, then reflect. So like that, until you, uh, find that everyone has reached the expected level. You do that action research. So then, how can we know? They have reached the expected level. How can you measure that? Tell me. You should tell, you can't just tell, okay, they have improved. Now you can't just tell, you should have a way to measure. Tell me, how can you do that?
We can conduct a post.
Yes, at the beginning you can have a pre-test and then you can have a post-test. Or in between you can have some other tests to compare with the pre-test, then you. Now give a test and then again you feel that there are some students who improve. You do the intervention, again you give a test, then finally you give the post-test, then you can compare pre-test and post-test results, right? Even you can have an observation schedule. So in this observation schedule, if you don't, uh, conduct tests, you can, uh, use observation schedule. You have some criteria and you put some marks out of five or three, whatever it is. And you observe whether they have improved. Imagine now for the group work that. You can't give a test, nee. So now at the beginning you have some criteria, like students actively engaging the activities. They help each other in, uh, during the activities. Uh, uh, then, uh, next one, hmm, they, uh. Hmm, how, how to say? Uh, so there are, there are, there are, there are students of mixed ability. It's a group of mixed ability, mixed ability means there are some. Uh, able students, some weak students and the able students, they support the weak students. So like that, you can have some criteria, there you put marks for each. Then you identify they have this kind of problem. Then you give them, put, give them some intervention, again you have observation schedule, then you put marks again. So like that, you can, uh, use observation schedule also. Even you can use questionnaire. Now through questionnaire, you can identify their perception, perception means their idea about. Now imagine that you, uh, give them a questionnaire to know about their willingness to work in groups, right? You give them a questionnaire. I like to work in groups. So one, two, three, four, you can say, uh, totally agree. Somewhat agree, neutral, uh. Uh, disagree, strongly disagree or totally disagree. So like that, you, you have, they have to rank according to a five, four, three. Three, two, one, like you put a number for each criteria. So they have to write the number. So accordingly. Uh, so I was talking about the questionnaire, right? So questionnaire can be given to identify the, um. Perception, their perception about something. As an example, their perception about grouping. Now, when you give, uh, the questionnaire, some of them say neutral. I don't like. So like that, you give a questionnaire to. See their perception about the, uh, about grouping. So at the beginning, there are about eight students who don't like grouping, then you give an activity. Maybe it's a competition or enjoyable activities to work in groups, then you give the same questionnaire, see their perception. So like that, you can compare. So mostly other, other researchers, we have data, lot of data. Quantitative data. Here you can use qualitative data to analyze and come to conclusions, right? Then. Now, uh, if you have any problem, you can ask before we go to, uh, the slides. That means what you, how, how can you prepare the slides? I'm going to make you aware about, how can you prepare the slides? Okay, right, uh, hmm, tell me. Any problem that you did not understand, any, any, uh, point or any fact you did not understand, you can ask. Then we, we will get it clarif- clarified before we go to the next.
Ma'am.
Yes, madam.
Yeah, ma'am, if we want to do action research on, uh, on a student. Do we want to get the permission from the parents that we are going to do?
That's like, now here you have ethical consideration. Yeah, yeah, ethical consideration is a must because we can't just take students for our purposes. So first you have to write a letter and get permission from the principal. Because it's on foremost, you have to do it, right? Whether, even the parents like, if the principal doesn't like, you can't do. Then sometimes you may happen to get permission from your, um, sectional head sauce, right? After that, uh, you have to get the permission from the parents, that you have to write a letter to the parent. Uh, I am doing research, so I am taking. Your student for this purpose and I take the responsibility of not revealing any information about the child. Not to use the child's name or picture, uh, in my research. It is, it is only for the research purpose. Got write a letter, if they are single people, you write in single, if they are family, you write it in sa- family. And ask them to sign and collect it and keep it with you. Because if, if there's any case, you have to, uh, you, then you have proof. Because without their consent, you can't take their children, children, right? And the other thing is, you can't use. Their names, you can use pseudonyms, pseudonyms can, even you can give the names of flowers, A, B, C. Or false names, Himal, Kamal, Karuna, Pa, like that you can use names. And you should not use their photos. If you are using photos, you have to cover their face or, uh, eyes, whatever it is. Then others won't be able to identify. So there are some ethical, ethics that we have to follow in, in a research.
Okay, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, any other thing you want to get clarified? Yes? If there anything you tell, before you go to your, uh, before we proceed, just tell if there's anything you want, you, you need, you can get it clarified. Now problems, can we proceed? Right, so don't copy this because this is not the, not a perfect one, there are so many mistakes here, right? So I'm just showing you only the format, right? So here you can use your topic like this developing, improving, you can start with a gerund, right? Improving, developing. Increasing, right? So like that you can use, you can start with a gerund or else you can give a totally different one, right? Now we can write well, so we are happy in groups, like that you can write totally different attractive topics. Right? So you can use this kind of that serious topic or you can have very interesting. Then up ita kuru puluang, upi kamati, kandavadikaranna, so like that you can change the way. Of writing, okay? Then you write your name, your course, student number, batch number, name of your university, so after that. You should have the table of content, so what are you going to write, okay? So then introduction, introduction means background of the study, then identification of the problem, how did you, how did you identify whether it is through observation? Or whether through a questionnaire by studying the documents or by giving a test. In newer marking papers, that's, you may have different sources of identifying by observing, by checking their past test papers, you can have so many sources to gather data. Then significance of the study means the importance. If you don't do this research, what will happen to them? So if you do this, they will be able to do these, these things, if not this will happen like that. Then research objectives and research. Questions, they should be compatible. So what you write in the research objective should be the same in the research question, they can't be too different, right? So then you should be able to as an example, to improve the participation, to get the active participation of the. Students in the group work. Then your question should be, how to get the active participation of the students in the group work like that you can. Just write the same, convert the same object into a question, right? Then close context means the tools that you are going to use, okay, we can, we can go through the academic context, I will explain. Then intervention plan, the intervention activity plan, timeframe. Ethical consideration as one of your students asked, ethical consideration means what are the ethics you have to follow? Then research limitation means that most probably, most of the times that the time is the limitation. Because you need to do a lot of activities but you can't find time, sometimes you have to do it during the free periods. So if you try to keep them after school for two days, they don't like because they have tuition classes, like that. So sometimes you expect the attendance of twelve students but. Only eight students participate in the extra classes like that, references and annexes. Right, so. Here, now in this introduction, there are so many writings, we don't expect that. In your introduction, you write them in point four, in bullets you can write one, about two, three, four lines, that's all, but you have to speak. You have to explain them, now here nobody is interested in reading this thing. So what you have to do is you have to write them in bullet form and keep on explaining. So that is the presentation, so we don't expect you to read what. Whatever you have written on the slides, right? Next one, identification of the problem, how did you identify your problem? So you can write it also into three lines and then you explain. Right now here, to identify five selected grade five students at A B C international school. The Jawa Draper Education is on with the difficulty of writing in English. And to understand the causes behind the gap in their English writing skills and to rectify the problem by implementing new. Method methods, now you have to say how did you identify? While I was teaching in the classroom, I observed these students have this problem, right? So then like that you, you have to tell how did you identify? Then you have. Significance, the significance of the problem, significance means the importance of doing this research. So what is the advantage? It has on the students, the school, the teacher, so whatever it is you have to write the significance of the study. Then research objectives, it should be compatible with the research questions. So there should be at least three, it's better if you can have four but not so many, right? Because you can't, you have to have some activities to achieve all the objectives. Right? So you have to have some activities to achieve these objectives or the questions. You should have answers to every question. Right, close context means what are the tools you have used to identify the problem, right? Now here, observation, observing low marks for English language paper, so you should have. The annexes, inability to build proper sentences, who are vocabulary skills, through observation you have observed all these things. Interviews from teachers, teacher one, students are not keen to write words, teacher do not attend you enough in the classroom, so you can interview the teachers about these students. Academic context, you have to. Find. Research paper. Search papers or research they have done related to your problem, ten, at least five, five to ten. And you have to write according to this structure, article, name of the problem, your problem. Author who has written it with the year, author and year. Key findings, so now this, this researcher has used these, these methods to overcome the problem, so like that you can find. You can write key findings, then source, with a journal article, a book, so you have to write what the source is. So like that, you have to find articles, that means recent articles, within five years, it is, it's okay within ten years. Two thousand twenty-four, then the two thousand fourteen, eight, Ghanipath. Seventeen, eighteen, nothing, upwards, so take the recent articles written by people, right? So you. Have to find ten to, within five to ten articles in the academic context. Then. Intervention plan, right? So intervention plan means its methodology, so you are using action research. Sample size, that how many students you are selecting, even eight students, six students. Sampling technique, sampling technique is purposeful sampling, that means you are taking them for a purpose. So data collection methods, how do you collect data? By observation, by interviewing, studying literature. Marking papers, so like that, the marks, they have scored for their continuous assessments like that you have to. Mention what are the data collection techniques. Right, then. Intervention plan or activity plan. Intervention, what is the intervention? Identify the writing level of the students. So, writing a short paragraph on myself. Step one, a activity, steps. In one activity there can be lots of steps, number one. Provide instructions on the points necessary to be covered. Word in the paragraph, so you tell, now these, these things should be in the paragraph. Educate the students on the basic vocabulary rules, now you can tell, now you have to use relevant vocabulary, you need to use correct grammar. You need to use correct punctuations, full stops, starting with capital letters, so you can give some instructions, these are the steps. Right, so resources they need, they need to write in books or whatever it is, so like that you can plan the activities, activity plan. Then, here, same, for one intervention there can be number of activities, for number of activities there can be different steps. And then you need the timeframe, the timeframe you need. The task or activity, month, week. Task or activity, later that you can, if you are doing within five months that you can divide them into four. Weeks, right? Then identification of the problem. Literature review, you read the literature, so how many days or weeks or months were spent, then write in the research objectives and research questions. Preparing the research proposal, presenting the proposal and getting approval. Implementation of the research, after getting the approval you have to do the, you have to start the research. Writing the research report, review and submission, the final report, so like that you need. To have a timeframe from the day you identified until you hand over your research thesis or research, yes, book. Then ethical consideration, so here, ensure to obtain permission to go ahead with the research from the relevant school authorities. The authorities, the principal and the sectional heads. Ensure to obtain the consent, consent from the individuals who are. Particularly being interviewed, so you can get the consent from the individuals, you can give a consent form, you can get it signed by them before interviewing them. Or you can get the permission from their parents. Ensuring the confidentiality of the identify, identities of the individuals who provide information for the research, so you have to. Ensure the confidentiality. Right, so like that you can write some more. Then research limitations, what are the limitations, right? So then research methodology can be time consuming, so you have to reduce certain activities. So sometimes you are unable to find research conducted by other people related to your topic. So you have some problems with the data collection, some of them did not provide you with data. You mean, right? So then the most probable, most important thing is you can't generalize the information. So if you do a research, now imagine you do a research, taking some samples from your zone. Or your province, then you can generalize it, generalize it. Like that you can generalize, but here, if you do an action research with five or six students in a school, you can't generalize. Because you have taken a small sample to test, you to solve your problem, so you can't generalize it. So the number of students in the sample is small so that the findings may not be generalized sufficient. Hmm, right, okay, so you like that the limitations, you can write even time was limited. Because you couldn't do the activities as you expected, since the students did not come, stay after school, since they have tuition classes like that. So if you are keeping them after school, you have to get the parents consent, right? Then references, references. American Psychological. APA referencing, APA seven, APA seven referencing. Because journal articles, journal, journal of education and evaluation. Slanted, slanted, can you, italic. So you can go through, there are so many websites to find APA referencing. With the examples you can find. Them to use APA referencing, right? Annexes, you can add, annexes means now the papers you gave for pre-tests, then the marks they obtained like that you can have. Some annexes in your presentation, right? So that's all. Here these are their annexes. Yeah. Okay. Now tell me if you have any problem. Related to the presentation, the P P T. Any, anything you want to get clarified? Yes?
And regarding choosing a topic for this. Is it okay to take a minor issue like, because you are trying for the first time, we want to take a small, narrow down topic?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, it should be very narrowed down, very narrowed down because you can't do a very big area within two, three months because you have only four months. Any other problem? Yes, tell, Chana you don't have any problem?
No ma'am, cutting up now it's fine.
Okay, others? If you don't understand you tell me, I can. Can explain it. Did you understand or you didn't understand? No problems related to the P P T, PowerPoint presentation? You have a clear understanding on how can you prepare the PowerPoint presentations and the slides?
Ma'am, for the presentation, we were, we are given ten minutes and another five minutes for. Yeah, okay.
And. You have to answer the questions.
Yeah, you have told ma'am you would send us a, a format or something.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I already sent, I don't know whether you have not received, I will show you.
Ahah, okay ma'am.
I sent this, I sent all these things, I don't know why you have not received. Can you all see?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so this is the format of the action research proposal, title and your name and the registration number in the first slide. Table of content in the second slide, third one introduction, background of the study. Then identification of the problem, how did you identify the problem, then significance of the study, the importance of doing this research. The research objectives in one slide, research questions in the other slide, so they should be compatible, then close context. Close context means the tools used to identify the research problem like questionnaire, observations, interviews like that. Then academic context means literature review, you had. Find at least ten articles and you have to complete article, name of the title, author, author and the year. Author and the year, then key findings. Major findings, research methodology use. You can write even the intervention they have used, then whether it is a journal, article or a book, right. Then it's one intervention plan, activity plan, timeframe. Ethical consideration, research limitation, references, annexes, clear.
Yes ma'am, it's clear and they have sent, sent us this one, yeah, so sorry ma'am.
Okay. Then I will show you. The criteria, no, no, marking criteria, right, the how. I how I'm going to give you marks. Right, now here that I have given only an example, uh so you have to write your topic. Name, student number, developing practical knowledge of science through three D physical models in grade. Six students, so like that you have to write your title, so these are the criteria that you are given marks, introduction. And under introduction, you have to tell about the background of the study, research problem. Significance of the study and limitations of the study, so if you want, you can arrange them in this way in your uh. Presentation, right, right, so though I have given that uh format, you can just. Write like this, you can prepare your slides like this, background of the study, research problem. Significance of the problem, limitation of the study. Then close context, tools used to confirm the identified problem, so how we identified the problem. Observation, questionnaire, uh test marks, test paper marks, right, okay. Then academic context, recent five related research, five to ten, if you have more, it's good. Right, at least if you have ten, you have so much of uh. Information, then you can find even the intervention they have used, the techniques or activities they have used, you can make use of them for your research as well. Then academic context means recent five related researchers and supportive way to prepare activities. So you have given ten marks for that. Then methodology. Under methodology, you can prepare research process. Activities, first. Intervention, second intervention, reflective journal. Ethical consideration, right. Then. Reflective note for each step, after each step, you have to write your reflection about half a page. Then timeframe, I showed you timeframe, activity and of that months. References, then I will give you marks for your presentation skills, the way you talk, so you have to uh. Switch on, no, audio, right, then. You have to talk, let me give you according to your presentation skills and he asked questions, then you have to answer for the questions overall hundred. Right, is it clear to you. Is there anything that you want to get clarified there. Anything you want to ask questions. Any questions you want to ask. No. Can you proceed. Hello. Can you proceed.
I think yes ma'am, we can go, we can proceed.
Okay. Now I identified, no, this is not this. I found one research article. It's not a perfect one, but just when I searched, I found this. Right here, so you don't need to write an action research, right, improving the ability of using pre nominal possessives in E S L writing. English as a second language, writing among grades of students at a government school, see they have, how they have narrowed down, right. Improving the ability of. Using pre nominal possessive, you know, in the English, English as a second language, there is one. Uh thing called pre nominal possessive, possessive format. Among grade seven students, they have narrowed it down to grade seven. At a government school, then again, they they have not mentioned the name of the school, instead they have used at a government school, right. So then abstract, now you need to write your abstract also, normally an abstract is written. After finishing your research. Right, so I will tell you how to write abstract, right, later on after finishing your uh presentation, proposal presentation. Then you give an introduction, here the introduction means that. She has given some introduction about the possessive form that she has selected possessive form, so she has given some introduction on that. Then after that, objectives. Literature review. So she has selected some of the literature, similar articles. Points from the similar articles, so you have to cite, right, when you find articles, you have to cite, you have to write. First name, like find last name and the year, Elise nineteen ninety eight and long nineteen eighty eight. You have to use recent findings, right, so like that. You can say, uh Elise nineteen ninety nine states that, yeah, on the, on the, on the, no, no, states that. According to Elise nineteen eighty eight, like that you can use. Elise nineteen ninety eight, it's processed that, states that, reports that, according to. Then. Uh materials and methods, like research methodology, so action research was used and. So there are a group of fifty grade seven students uh at a government school. In Colombo during two months of teaching practice, action researchers utilized as it was the most effective approach for the teacher to address the issue at hand. In fact, Mills two thousand eleven considered action research as a feasible option for teacher researchers, so they have given some definitions also. Moreover, action research in education can be defined as the process of studying. A school situation to understand and improve the quality of the educative process, so like that you can give some definitions also. Then. Uh intervention plan, so here, materials and methods, under that you have to write the population, sample, uh. With the with uh teaching, you know, uh data correction techniques, you all, you have to include all these things. Intervention plan, so. The pre-test, she has given a pre-test for fifty students and. Out of them forty five students had problem in using the possessive form, right, so that she has. So after that, she says that she is using two theories, the hypothesis of Wiggotsky and Michael Long. So accordingly that she prepared some questionnaires, one for teachers and. One for the students and she has used pre-test and post-test. Data analysis and discussion, after gathering data, they have analyzed and there is a discussion of the data, then activity one. Right, so what she has given as activity one, activity. Two, activity three, activity four, five, six, so like that the activities, then after that. Analysis of the pre-test and post-test performances, they have compared, uh you can use uh. Excel for this. Then. So like that, then you have to. Discuss. Analysis of the questionnaire, you can read, then you will get an idea, read some of the articles. Then you will get an idea, then come to conclusion. And after that, suggestions for improvement, the recommendations, you can use recommendations, then references. Right, so here that you have to hang out. You have to just one inch. You have to use hangout option. So you have to use APA seven, referencing APA seven. Right, so read some of the articles, you will learn lots of things and you can make use of those techniques for your research as well. Right, so read them, then you you will get lots of ideas. Don't. Do shortcuts, because shortcuts won't give you knowledge, if you do it properly. You can do research, you will love doing research. And you can do your presentations at symposia, research conferences. Right, so take the opportunity being teachers, now, slater tech conference is also for teachers, especially English teachers. So you can do some action research and you can present that, it's an arena for. The teachers, right, so, so tomorrow I'm going there, it's a three day conference conducted by the British Council. So I'm going to do my presentations next year, this year I couldn't send my uh presentation. Or my research, I I could do a research with my students this year. So, anything you want to get clarified before winding up the class. Now, now it's. To get it clarified later on that, don't repent. Yes, anything you want to get clarified. Clear.
Well.
Yes, but I still.
Then we have to present our presentation.
Uh now, you have asked for an exte- asked for an extension, I think from Mr. Rishan. Uh he will inform you that you request him, the the time you need for this, because you need to read literature. You need to do the pre-test, you need to collect some data before preparing this, so. You ask from at least. One week time, you need to read. Otherwise, it's very difficult, then only you will get a proper idea about what is an action research, what are the methodologies you can use. What are the tools you can use for collecting data. Any other thing you want to get clarified. If you don't have any problems, you can wind up the class, if you have anything you ask before we wind up, because you have to prepare your presentations. You are given marks out of hundred, right. Can you wind up the class now, you don't have any problems. Hello.
Yes ma'am.
Hello. Okay, shall we end the class now. You need, you have any problem.
I think no ma'am.
Okay, right, so everything is clear, but I have explained to you today. Are you confident, are you confident to prepare your presentation, PowerPoint presentations. Okay, so we'll see at the presentation. Uh proposal presentation, so we'll, I hope that you will have. Uh different types of, don't select the same same problems. I hope you will come out with different problems that you encounter, that's the burning problem that you have in your classrooms. That you really want to find solutions, right, so then do it. Uh truly, then you will find good result. Right, so then finally you will be happy if you do a genuine work, right, if you just copy something and do for the sake of doing that you want, but if you really do something. You will feel a great happiness of doing something on your own, genuine work. Okay, then thank you for joining, hope you all will prepare your PowerPoint presentation as well. And you will do good presentations and you know the marking criteria, now you know the criteria for giving marks. And how to prepare your PowerPoint presentation. Stations, so uh we'll meet with your presentations, okay, thank you for joining, have a good night.
You should the same, good night.